Call regular council meeting order, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Still any additions to the agenda? Nobody? Any citizen comments? Looks like we've got any extra people here. Consider agenda, approve the minutes and regular council meeting on February the first of two thousand and twenty-two. But a motion and a second, all favor? All opposed, council passes five and zero. Appropriating ordinance, two fifteen and twenty twenty-two for twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and three cents. Twelve thirty-one of twenty-one, AP three, for twenty-six hundred and forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. Rosenkrass Bemis Drilling Company for two thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Core in Maine for four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seven cents. And petty cash, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Entertaining motion?
So moved.
We've got a motion. We got a second. Any more discussion? All favor? All opposed, passes five and oh. Move on down to department heads, electric department, Jeff Williamson.
Well, first thing, midstates was here last week. We've got some conduits in from the engine and down through the trench on the south side of the plant going to where the fan on the radiator is. And that was about the end of that deal. They left on Friday. The stuff that you have in front of you that I sent you, I kind of started working on this a little bit last summer and some of the council knew it. This first small piece right here is underground behind, between second and third, from Prairie East. It goes down behind Vance Fishers, Mark Tompkins, Jim Foxes down in there. Got two rotten poles in there now. And so we talked about trying to get the underground done on it. And the other one is really an extension of it. It just goes south from there and I can lay them together and show you how they work. But part of the reason we put this together was that Golden Belt Telephone has offered to bore all the trench we need at no cost. We've done favors for them over the years and they're fixing to put fiber optic in town. And so while they're here, they're more than willing to do any of the boring that we need to do. So the last time we had it done, it was about fifteen dollars a foot. There's about two thousand feet there, so about thirty thousand dollars of the boring for nothing. In behind Fishers and down in there, it's a mess. I mean, it's just a horrible mess. And I've tried to put it together so that if there is a house built at the end of Third Street, north of Rosenberg's office, that we can serve it to and get it done and out of the way, and then we'll put pad mount transformers in there. And I do have enough to do it. And the one, the other one going south, I probably could lay them together and show you how they fit. Let's see. Get my picture straight here. This is really this is what it is. And this is the way this line sets. This goes back in behind Stanford, Steve Sanders down in there, and it goes south. It goes through the lots behind Regal Shop, across First Street. This line feeds the school, feeds part of it anyway. And what we wanted to do was go down underground at the edge of Second and come across First Street and then tie it back in down here. At the same time, we're going to set a cabinet here and run this over a block and a half and back up to behind Joe Rosenberg's across the street from me because it's all open water, every bit of it. And just try and do all of it at the same time. The two prices that I gave you, one was for hard conduit, the other one was for rolled. Some of the material is available right now. Some of it we don't know. So I priced from Staniens for the wire and then I priced from Wesco, which is a company we borrow electric meters and water meters from. And Wesco has all of this available on the dates that are stamped or put on the right-hand side of that. And I would really like to use rolled pipe, I think. It, I think it's cheaper in the long run labor-wise and then, you know, just material-wise. It doesn't take near as much material as it does to use. When we go to hard conduit, we have to use sweeps and that stuff to get up or rolled plastic. We can cut it, bring it up the pole, put an adapter on it, go right straight up. So anyway, that's kind of where I'm at. You know, I know it's a lot of money, but it also will be a lot more money if we do it anytime later than this because the stuff, the wire's climbing really fast. In fact, it really scared me. We bought, we bought that wire for the truck park last summer or last fall, paid a dollar ninety-six a foot for it. Now it's three thirty for the same wire. So they were supposed to have another price increase yesterday. But these guys at Wesco told me they'd be firm on this price and they would guarantee delivery on this by the date. Now, the one, the number two is higher from them than it is from Staniens, but it's available right now. They weren't sure they could cut the length that I wanted. The reels are about twenty-seven hundred feet long. So these guys agreed to cut the lengths that I want for this price, put them on a wooden reel and ship them to me. So anyway, I think altogether, and then the Wesco quote has a sectionalizing cabinet, which is where we'll make up the single face stuff to go to Rosenberg's and there, which I can't get, it's not available from Staniens till April of next year. So it's, I mean, stuff's starting to get tough. But I've just, I've got enough poles starting to fail that this might be a good time to get it done, at least get it bored in and work on it a piece at a time and then cut it over when we get everything hooked up, so.
Jeff, what if someone were to build a house on the corner of North Prairie Street, Second Avenue on Kelso's Lot?
I'd still be able to feed it. The way I've got those transformers set up, I think, Ryan, I'm going to set one like in behind Steve Young's.
Yeah.
Then set one to the far end of Vance's building where the garage goes across that, where Pokie lives.
Right.
And feed the second one there and then the third one over by Jim Fox's. So we'll be able to hit it pretty easy and feed right out of there, you know?
So you would just run secondary from that transformer?
From that pad mount.
If someone were to run the house over there, you just run it from the ground, or above ground secondary?
No, I bury it. I think, I think I'd have them bury it. See, at the time that they did this, they allowed people to put their meters on our poles. Well, now they're all sitting on our poles and half of them are rotten. And if we do it, we've got to move the service and everything else. So no, I think we just work out a deal where, like these others, you know, they've come to the alley, their meters, most of them are on the alley. So if they'd come back to there, then we'd serve it out of that transformer to them and just keep it all underground if we could. I think would be the best thing.
Just trench all the way back to the transformer?
Yeah, which I don't think would be very far, sixty feet maybe, you know? So I, yeah, I'm hoping, you know, that, and I'm going to set it, I'm going to set a fifteen there for right now because I really only am going to feed two houses off of it. With that being the case, and I pick up a third one, you know, later on that lot, so.
Does a secondary, secondary going to that house to the north of Kelso's Lot? Does that go across there all the way overhead right now? All the way back to behind Vance's, all the way down?
Yeah, it's all overhead. And it's single wire. They took primary wire and strung it in there like you'd string fence wire and then just hooked onto it instead of using Triplex. I mean, it's a, and it's a horrible deal. It's just really bad, but.
So like customer costs after this is done, there's going to be like citizen costs of?
No, the ones, the ones that don't have meters on the alley, we're going to go straight to the meter. I figured, I figured underground, I think that's our cost, you know, we're on, it's on the service side. So when they bore their cable in, we're going to shoot that pipe right in beside it, pick it up.
So no citizen cost?
No, 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 I don't think there should be. And I figured, I figured the wire, I figured the wire to have enough to serve them. In fact, I'm probably a little bit long on the wire because up until today, I didn't know that two of those meters were on the alley. So they're really close to feeding. So I got a couple hundred feet there, but you know, I might come a couple hundred short somewhere else, so. Yeah, I didn't want to involve any cost to the customer at all.
Right.
No, the only thing I wanted was permission to bore up to their house. And everybody that I've talked to was okay with it, so anyway. Then we get across the street there. See, right now that primary is fed at the end of the alley between First and Second. It comes out on the very east end behind Brad Ives's, comes out on the street, comes north in front, in front of Rosenberg's, then turns and goes back up that alley to the west. So we'll cut all of that down. And when we're done, we'll feed it from behind Regal Shop where we tie that line in. And we're going to cut two phases of that line out. They used to feed the hospital. And when we redid all of that, when we built that East Side Two Circuit, we took it around and brought them into, from the east off of that new wire that we had. So a good share of that, we're going to be able to go in behind like Barry Regan's old house and cut part of that down where we can't get in and trim and work anyway. So I'm glad that it's open, you know, that we could get in there and we'll get it finished up and get it cleaned up, so. Yeah, then I think we'll stand that stuff vertical that's left back in there and clean it up and be done with it. It'll take us a good share of the summer, you know, but that's okay. I mean, I've got, if I've got some wire left, I've got a couple other places I'd like to do and clean them up, like out here on the end of Fourth Street where the primary comes across the highway and feeds back just to Bob Ives's house and the entry signs. And if I can bore from Fifth Street down along the fence and Hamples, come around the corner while I can put that underground, I'll cut all that overhead stuff down there too. And we've got one at Jimmy Green's that we could do it. We'll finish cutting that down across the highway too to clean it up. So anyway, I think it makes the entry into town look a whole lot nicer, you know, if that garbage isn't hanging there. And I've hated it for years, but just haven't been able to do it, so.
You said bore into the customer's house, what do you mean by that?
Right up to the meter. We'll bore, we'll bore in the yard, bring it up right beside the house and just bring it right into the, to the high side of the meter, to the top side of the meter and hook it up. There won't be, there won't be any cost to them whatsoever.
But there'd be a cost, I mean, obviously Golden Belt Telephone is not going to pay for that boring though, right?
They're going to give us all of it, anything, yeah, because they got to take the cable to the house too, see? So it's a win-win deal for us, yeah. Yeah, and he said any place you tell me you're going to cut that down. And, and they weren't supposed to start till late summer, early fall. They were supposed to do the one in Larnet first. But he called me a week ago and he said, hey, he said, I think we're going to do Saint John first. I said, well, let me put some stuff together and I'll take it to council and see, because he wants to start by the first of March, so.
So they're paying for all the boring?
It's a pretty good deal. Pretty good deal. But we've done a lot of stuff for them over the years and, and you know, we've become pretty good friends. We set poles for them and stuff. He said, well, we're here, just, we got to go to the house too, so we just stick them together and pull them through. So anyway, I'm glad to take it.
What about anything that they bore into?
Well, we always take that chance. It's like trenching or anything else, you know, we get it located and, and do the best we can. We've got a water line on First Street and we've got fiber optic in there and that stuff. I mean, we just have to get it down underneath it and come back up. We have to know the depths. But you know, it's no different tobacco or anything else. I mean, you know, you take your chance every time you stick one in the ground, but.
But that would be the city's responsibility?
Yeah, we, you know, we'll have to help repair it. I mean, it's, if they're doing it for us, yeah. If it's a bore that we're using it mutually, I don't know. I can't tell you that.
I just wanted to get that on the table, clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess, I mean, I guess I'd like a little more information on what kind of agreements Golden Belt has with the land.
This is a verbal, it's just they have to go into the house. I mean, if they don't have a landowner agreement, if you want cable, this is the way you get it. I mean, that's the way it is. I mean, if we were, if we were in a new housing development and everybody went underground, you'd have to go underground whether you wanted to or not. But you know, we're doing it for storm reasons, I mean, more than anything. But you know, it's just a, it's a gentleman's agreement, it's what it is.
All these blue lines that go from what is supposed to be the alley to the house, that's all the ones that need to be underground from?
I don't remember which color I made them.
Well, just the blue lines from the alley to the house.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
That's all the meters that are on the house?
But there's a couple of these that are in the alley. See, after I drew this and we walked this out, we realized there's two in here and then Fox's is on the fence too. So we've only got these three houses here and this house over here and this house, the big house. So there won't be as much boring there as there would have been because they're already taken care of and brought to the, what is the alley easement now? So, yeah. That's why I say we may gain some wire there, but we may use it somewhere else too, so.
I think, I think that cable and ducted or whatever you call it, rolled pipe would be for sure the best.
It's just, that's just water pipe, you know, I can't buy any duct. I got it from Millers. That's where I priced it there. She's the only guy, the only person in the country that's got it. There is no rolled duct pipe in the country right now.
It's just a primary?
It's just four inch pipe, but it's thick wall, you know, like our duct was before, it's three eighths thick, it's like schedule eighty. Same stuff, yeah. She's the only, she had an eight hundred foot roll up there, she said, but you got to take all of it. I needed about six hundred feet. I said, I'll take it, you know, if I, if they'll let me have it, I'll take it, so.
And then you'll just stick the wire in after?
We'll pull it in after, yeah. We'll get everything buried and then we'll pull it in, yeah. We'll blow a string and we'll pull it back, yeah. Pipe in the pits and that stuff will all be first. And then we'll start pulling wire, so.
I think that's a pretty good deal. Like the only thing I'm a little bit nervous about is going to the customer's house, you know, like where they have the patio or something like that.
You know, on those, we're going to have to, I haven't found one yet. I did find one across the alley from Regal Shop and we're going to go in overhead on it. I mean, we're gumming back up that pole anyway, we're just going to leave it overhead. And if it turns into a problem like that, that's what we'll do. I mean, we'll just, I won't, I won't break a piece of concrete out to bring it up. I just won't do it. If it's not dirt, we won't do it, so. We'll just, you know, if it is dirt, we'll dig a bell hole and we'll get it, we'll bring it up, so.
Let's see, I'm back to Steve, Steve Young's house maybe is from?
His meter's clear out on a pole. That's one of them that's broke. It's right underneath, it's on that primary, but it's, it's broken. And we're probably going to have to take the meter can and stuff loose and set a post in there and reset that box when we bring that up because it's rotted off, it's been moving for quite a while. But his is out, Vance is out, Mark Tompkins is out, Jim Fox is out. So there's four that, you know, that we don't have to cross their yard at all. Just a little bit to get to, that's all.
You've talked to these customers?
We talked, yeah, we talked to people on the, on the south side last fall. And they said, yeah, it would be no problem, you know, so.
I mean, it'd be a benefit to them too.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, outages will be less, sure, sure.
Just run it past them.
Yeah, I mean, it cleans up their yard and, and it helps us too, so. It'll be beneficial to everybody there, I think, you know, the problems will go. I mean, it's always just terrifying when you have a storm that you know you're going to get a call down in there and you really got no way to get a truck in. It's a mess, so.
Same with like said, blocks out there.
Yeah, so.
What are they thinking, coming pretty soon?
I think they're thinking that they want to start first part of March, you know? So I at least want to have the, have the wire and the pipe on hand. I don't need to have the wire on hand, but I need to have the pipe on hand, you know? So, but I'm just afraid of what the wire's doing, that it's just going to just keep climbing and it just scares me to death. I mean, the cheapo underground secondary we used to buy is not cheap anymore. Over three dollars for the U R D, I mean, it's terrible. But we sized it big enough that the amperage wouldn't be a problem on anybody's house. We went to two odd, so you know, no longer than those runs are, they should be fine, so. And the other ones, like I say, are in the alley, so they're real short runs, they won't be very long at all.
Where were you getting the rolled plastic, Millers?
Millers, yeah.
I just feel that if they're willing to do the boring and save us thirty grand now, it's time to do it.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I, that's how I feel.
As long as we've got wire, we're going to use that thing just as much as we can. We're going to stick as much in as, as you know, as we can afford to, so.
And they've got all the, the rolled plastic there available?
The rolled plastic is in the yard. Yeah, I was up there last Wednesday or Thursday and talked to her. So she's got the pipe, unless she sold it between then and now while she's got the pipe. So she said, you don't want to order that in to pay freight. She said the freight's twenty-five hundred dollars on the reels. So she said it costs just as much as what the pipe costs. So, but she said, I've got these if you want, if you'll take the footage as I've got. So I think, I think the plastic, I wish I had brought my glasses so I could see. I think, I think that poly, that two inch poly, I think it was a seventeen or eighteen hundred foot reel. I put two thousand because I couldn't remember. So it may come in a little cheaper than that, but the four inch is right. It's eight hundred foot is what that reel is. And then if we don't have to rent a trailer from her, I think we can put these on some reels that we got down here. I mean, leftover from the sewer deal, we've got tons of them down here. So we can steal Davis's roller for a day or two and pull them in while the trailers are a hundred bucks a day, so. You know, save us some money too. I mean, that's what we did the last time, so. I think we can take one of those reels apart, one side of it, slide that reel on and use one of those reels we've already got, so. I'm hoping we can anyway, so.
So Jeff, what, what do you need approved? You need like the Wesco, that's pretty much what, what you're leaning towards?
Yeah, and I think if we do the, I'd like to see the whole thing approved as far as using the plastic or using the conduit, one of the two. And then I'll kind of, because some of this stuff is, might take a while to get. I'm hoping that it won't, but I know that the steel pipe, the riser pipe, some of it's tough to get. And, and the price is going up on it every day too. I've got a few pieces, but I don't have near enough to do what I've got to do, so. I'd like to get them coming, you know, and make sure that I have all the material really before we start the job, so I'll hold it up. So anyway, that's kind of where I'm looking. There's enough money, I talked to Pam today, there's enough money in the water and light fund to more than take care of this, so. I was afraid that we was going to take it out of capital outlet and she said we didn't have to. We could take it out of water and light fund and there was enough there to do it, so anyway.
Jeff, do you have money allotted or in your fund? And if you got into something, caused, hit something and it cost five or eight thousand dollars?
We have insurance for stuff like that, just like everybody else does, you know?
Even though they were boring your?
Yeah, we'd still have to, if it was our bore, we'd have to stand behind it, sure we would, yeah.
I mean, I'm not getting into council, I just.
No, no, I mean, we have insurance for that. Even though we got one tagged a year ago or two years ago and we didn't find it for a year, you know? I mean, it happens, but.
So you're, you're talking the, the rolled plastic list and then the Wesco?
And the Wesco bid, yes.
I'd make a motion to have Jeff buy the rolled plastic and fittings from Millers in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
We've got a motion on the table and a second. Any more discussion for Jeff or any other questions that you guys have got that you, we need to get cleared up before we vote on this? With that being said, all favor? All opposed? Passes five and oh. Get your stuff ordered, Jeff.
I'll do it, thank you, Wesco.
Yeah, we'll have to do the, I was going to do them separate. I'd make a motion to approve the Wesco quote for the wire at nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Got a motion, second on the table. Any more discussion regarding the wire before we vote? All, all all in favor? All opposed? Passes five and oh. Can you get your wire also, Jeff?
I'll get it done, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any more questions for, for Jeff? Move on to water department, Jason?
Well, there's no word from the state on the water tower yet. And the two inch meter had come in, we're going to get it put in the, in the light plant. And then on the sewer side of it, Austin called me and was wanting to know, I just want to clarify what we wanted to do on Cameron, some of the sewers this year. Because he wants to get us on a schedule. And so I was, what, are you guys just wanting me to pick out some spots that I think is, that could be used? Or how much footage do you want me to do? And go from there.
How much, how much was Cameron the first time? It's like ten thousand.
That's something, I have to look back.
It was like eighteen thousand dollars, I think.
I have to look back.
Twenty, twenty-two, yeah, by the time we got finished.
Yeah, they had a few more here for the dings and stuff and things, but.
How much, I mean, how much, you got an idea of?
I have no idea. I just wanted to clear this up so I could sit there and get to going on it and then sit there and call him and say, get us a price on what you think this and this and this will cost. I just wanted to make sure it was still open for discussions to go in and start measuring. And if that's what you guys want to try to do and continue doing this program. And that way I could call him back and sit there and say, yeah, just give me a price on this money, this much footage. I'll have to get the depths on them, of course, and all that stuff.
So with Cameron, we went in and did the, maybe like the fours and fives or whatever it was? And all of that was done in the, say, ten thousand?
And the buildings, underneath the buildings, that was the other big one.
So we'd be ready to get more Cameron and then take the worst and get in?
Right.
Yeah, I think we'd.
Most of what we've done was First Street this way, right?
Well, that and then the school over here from there up to, you know, and the buildings underneath this building and all the ones under there, the school, so. All the buildings are done for, I think, for the most part, but we, I just want to sit there and I'll get with Jeff and, and whoever else thinks which one's the oldest part in town and, and let's go from there and start getting the older ones.
And color code it, what was done and then.
Yeah, I'll get that, yeah.
The next amount.
I would say we still look at probably doing about the same amount that we've done.
I think if we cameraed ten thousand, we probably did like eight thousand foot of line, I think, didn't we?
Probably, yeah. That, that part will be, the part that we want to, they'll have to clean it, of course, because they're going to run the cameras down it. That'll be a fee. And then they'll come back with another fee, what, what, what we look at the films and decide that, hey, this is, this is what we need to do, this, that and the other. And then so he'll throw me another bid on top of that one, just to get the pipe laid in and go like we did last year.
Pretty early to tell, but as far as you know, the lining?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it's nice. Especially cleaning it.
No issues, yeah.
No, not yet, nothing. Except when they, you know, forgot to cut one of the services out. Which that happens, but it works good now.
Yeah, yeah. I would just, I would maybe say, you know, maybe do ten thousand foot or see how much you have, ten thousand foot, see what the price is, bring it back to us. We'll see where, if it's changed much. I mean, if you can even, I send ten thousand foot out there.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, there's plenty. I just, I just wanna get the, get with, you know, whoever, whoever knows the, which part's the oldest. And, uh, and I'm sure it's all about the same age. We'll just figure out what, cause the most probable parts that we've had are fixed. So we, and we found one over here on Fifth Street that, uh, they were doing over there. And some tree roots that got in there and just completely tore the whole collar off of it where the ladies of sewer went down in there. And it was, uh, it wasn't good. But we got it, helped them get it fixed and, and, uh, we're gonna jet, jet it tomorrow. Just to clean the roots and finish the roots out of it. It's just stuff like that. You just never know what's underground. It could be the newest pipe and clay pipe in town. It's got the biggest holes in it, you know, I, I just don't know without looking, you know?
I'm good with trying to do about what we done last year as far as Cameron. And basically, we budgeted to do that whole project and then it came back to the code that they, yeah, pretty much all of it, whatever you call that.
Yep. Well, I'll just get the, I'll just get a map made up of the, the ones we got done, different colored, and the ones that I picked to, uh, get done, cleaned and cambered, and then go from there.
Check price, see what, the price is the same or, you know, what's gonna cost us to do that much again.
Alright, sounds like a good.
Is that the consent of the council, body of field?
Yep.
On the street side of it, we've been trimming trees, of course, it's sweeping. And, uh, and then I, I, I. This is the one I wanna ask about. The, the, uh, truck parking out there on the Eighth Street. I found out that we probably oughta get a permit for that. And the gentleman that I talked to sat there and said that if I didn't, and I went ahead and did it, and then they wanted to be, uh, real mean about it. They can make me dig that back up. Take it right back out, get the permit, put it right back in. So I, I called, I called, uh.
The Culver going into the.
This, yeah, going into the ditch of the state. Out there on Eighth Street. So I, I sat there and called Mitch at K D O, or K E D O T. And he sat there and said, "It's not a big deal. I could sit there and get on their line and fill everything out, and I just gotta make sure of getting," uh, he really wanted to know if we could get an insurance picture of our insurance. And he said, "Other than that," and he says, "I see it going pretty good, and then he'll pass it on up to, uh, the higher authorities, and then they'll okay it, and we can get started on it." If we can't find nobody to do this, then I think we oughta try to tackle it and just get it done. I mean, you can only, you can only do it, wait so long. So.
I would say one way or the other, we're gonna do it eventually. Someone's gonna do it, and if we need a permit to dump onto the state, I say we start now and get that stuff.
Well, that's, yeah, we know about the permit waiting thing, so. Yeah. Well, that way I can get to work on it tomorrow, get it done, and probably have it, and hopefully in another couple of weeks. So that way that's out of the way. And then, uh, the other part is the equipment. I'd sit there and called, uh, called, uh, Morgan Diesel. And they haven't, didn't answer the phone, so I looked a message and hopefully they'll get back with me soon. And the other one is the mowers. Need to discuss about that mower and getting a mower bought for this, for this next mowing season, and hopefully others come with a new mower. There's some handouts Jamie printed out. I, and, uh, the ones on the John Deere that she printed out, the first ones you should have and had. Les was helping me do this, since he's gonna be doing the mowing part of it, him and Dale. And so he, he got a call back for them, cause I, I asked him to find out if that, if those, uh, appraisals were still good. And he sat there and says, "They're not even gonna sit there and price them no more. They're not gonna know when they even gonna, gonna get them." And so he just kinda thought, you know, I mean, it's whatever it is, if you guys wanna buy one, you buy it, and then when it gets here, it's yours. That's kinda attitude was going on, so I just thought, well, okay. So Les called another gentleman, or another John Deere company in, uh, American Implement and Dodge. And that was that last one she printed off today and gave to you. And that, you can go run through those if you'd like. That's the only John Deere that I, that, that we even had a bid on. And that one comes with a blower and a bagger, and it's a lighter weight mower than the others. The other ones are from Fairview. It's a grasshopper mower. We got two, two from him. And then you all should, or you should have others from the last time of the grasshopper company itself. And you can, you can look through those. All of them have the baggers. I, I chose the, the three baggers instead of the, the lift. Just cause it's gonna be easier to dump that grass and leaves and stuff in a pickup than with the, with the dump. You know, I have to handle, handle it two or three times, so that's why I didn't even kinda worry about that. We just went with the three-bagger system on it. And you have a one, two, and a three, and I think a four bids there on those. And here's a picture of the, I just went ahead and printed this out. There's one of the John Deere. You guys wanna look at that guy? That, just picture a three-bagger. I didn't find one with a bagger system on it, but that one on John Deere, I have the three-bagger on it. So it's ma, and then we have a Hustler one. This gentleman here priced out a Hustler one. And I didn't know, did you guys have this one here?
No. I thought that was just one of them.
Well, he didn't even send pictures or nothing, and, uh, it says, "Thank you for requesting a bid for sixty, sixty-inch diesel mower." Unfortunately, they don't have the bagging system on that diesel Hustler mower. The others are sixty. They come with the baggers and they, it's gonna be a long wait for those. And they're gasoline engines, but they do have the bagger on them. And with the, the bagger on that one is a twenty thousand, so it's ranking right up there with the John Deere, so I just kinda just, well, there it is. So I really didn't, I'm not gonna worry about that one too much, cause I ain't think it'd be a good interest part of it. And then the, the other Hustlers there you have is from that, uh, gentleman at Fairview. The only one that I was gonna, that I was gonna tell you on this one, on the Fairview, is on that bid from, from them on the grasshopper mower, or on the Hustler mower, sorry. Is that one is a hyperdrive. And, uh. He said that that transmission on that one, if you guys look, or decide, do you wanna look at that one real hard? The transmission is old and cooled, so it's a, it's a better, long-lasting mower when it comes to terrain, a long, long mowing turn for a long time. So.
So the use for this mower that you're wanting to buy, make?
Parks and Square.
Parks and Square, okay. Nice for grass.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna bag it?
Pam's pushing that issue. So, yeah.
These are not looking without being bagged.
I mean, it looks better being bagged. All yards look better being bagged.
And if not for that part of it, just for the leaves in the fall?
Personally, I've had a Hustler with a bagger, and it's not, I, I mean, I like the Hustler mowers for farms and stuff, but. As far as the bagging, it doesn't wanna have enough suction.
Well, this, now, I thank you for bringing that up. Every mower here that you guys see, every one comes with a blower attachment that blows that stuff in there. So just, just throwing that out there too. It comes belt driven blower.
The Hustler does?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep.
Is that what the back, back, back catcher is?
No, that's the dumping one. I was kinda wanting to just skip over that one, but I, I brought it to the table. What it is, it's like this, it just sits there, bags it.
They've got the options on all three of them.
Yeah.
Both of the Hustlers. Three-bag catcher, a back-back catcher.
Right. Uh, when you add those ones up, like this one here, this one here on the Hustler hyperdrive. All I did was, the, the extra cost for it was, uh, for the bagger with the blower, the three baggers, thirty-three ninety-nine. And, and then the, uh, the flat tires, if we decided we want, which probably, I figure we do since we doing the other ones. It's just the foam filled, you know, like you did those ones. And then, uh, for two nineteen. Gave us a government discount on that of thirty-five hundred. The promo price was fifteen forty-nine, or fifteen four ninety-nine, and then, uh, the total of that, just the mower was a, uh, just right at twelve thousand. Then plus the thirty-three ninety-nine and the two nineteen for the tires. So.
I would really look at the warranty between the two, if there's a two you're looking.
What was the plan with the one that?
Build one?
Yeah.
Uh, we, uh, we were talking about that a while back, and I think everybody agreed to at the table too, is just put it on purple wave and.
Just so.
And, yeah, and see what we can't get out of that guy. If there's two or three that you're very interested in, I could sit there and ask, get, at least get those down to a narrowed down pile. And then we can start going on the, uh, see what warranty like, like he said, Bobby said, and then go from there. But the John Deere is in stock in Dodge, and he said the bagger will not be far behind it.
Got by two of the Hustlers for the price of the John Deere though.
Flaming.
And it's expensive when you go to fix them too.
Yep.
Of course, they all are, but. Yeah. The Hustler does have a five-year, three-thousand-hour warranty on the pumps and bill motors and three-year no limit warranty on the mower itself. Do the rest of this. Mom, you've got several big mowers.
He has big boys.
Bad boys.
They're bad boys.
That's all I, that's all I need.
I know, but I'm just. I can bag it, but. Plus compressed air.
We don't bag. I don't think they even make a bag this big, that I'm aware of.
And it's not just the bag, like we, they've talked, like they'd like a zero turn compared to the big bogies.
Well, zero turn inside the city square would probably be a lot easier than.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah.
And up around the parks and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we used mine there to do the bagging there the last couple of times, and I, I thought it worked great.
Leaves.
Yeah, definitely. And with that blower on there, yeah, cause she's right. I mean, I had to get out and.
Yeah.
With those leaves, cause they just get fine tuned and I'd get to going, which I probably could've slowed down a little. But, uh, with that, with that blower on there, uh, cause I know a guy that had one, and, yeah, he wouldn't have it any other way. And it sounds like most of them with the sixty inch, you're all going to that blower because of that problem.
They have to, yeah.
It's just attached with a belt that hooks up to the, uh, the mower pulley.
And really, this mower oughta last us a lot longer than normal, cause it's not gonna be mowing our ditches and everything else.
Yes, the Parks and Square.
Me personally, I go with the Hustler, the hyperdrive. With the three-bag catcher, but. Only one person. Spending.
Quite a bit less money.
Fifteen grand instead of twenty-five thousand.
Yep.
You thinking about bagging it year-round then, or just?
Well, if, uh, if I'm not gonna get too much slack about it, I'd soon just mow without bagging, but we'll see how that goes.
I guess I haven't never seen, I'd really bunch up and.
He's been staying up on it, you know, I, he's does it, I think he was doing it twice a week there for a while. And, uh, you can see it less snow, the more you mow, the less you're gonna see it wind roads. So, I mean, yeah. Cause those two were, just seems like they were just mowing there constantly all the time, cause someone, once it gets done, they go right back to where they were and just keep going. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's hearing us say.
One guy on one mower constantly going around the parks and bagging it.
Yeah. Mine, mine was a smaller one. Mine was a smaller deck, so it took a little bit. With the sixty inch, I mean, he's gonna whip it out pretty good.
Pick it up and move.
What'd you say about availability, Jason?
Hustlers, Hustlers pretty good deal, yeah, pretty quick.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is there a reason that you're going with sixty instead of seventy-two?
I think it was just avail, availability, I guess.
Would you like to see a quote for seventy-two and how long it would, that'd be my answer.
It's up to council.
Do you know how, how big are the decks on the big mowers that you have?
I don't know.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Seventy-two.
Wonder if you can get a bagger for seventy-two inch though. I don't know if that, if that system's big enough.
That's what I'm...
This probably might have a sixty-inch. It's got rear and side. On the Hyperdrive, doesn't it? I'm just wondering if, if you get seventy-two inch, if you're gonna be able to...
That's a good point, I didn't check that, I just figured sixty in with a bagger would be...
Well, I just don't, I mean, yeah, it's just twelve more inches, but if you throw twelve more inches at that blower, it may not keep up with the two. I don't know. Of course, you're probably gonna add another three or four thousand dollars on there.
They might rank that three bagger with that size of deck too. See, I don't think I've ever seen a four, four bag mower. Maybe, I don't think I have though. Huh?
I think it took three.
Yeah, I think so too.
I still think I'm okay with just sixty inch. Be fine to do this.
Hustler Hyperdrive, the three bag catcher.
Or is that a motion?
Sure. With a solid front, flat free front tires. That's it. That was fifteen thousand six hundred seventeen dollars.
What was it?
Fifteen thousand six hundred seventeen dollars.
And that comes with the bagger and all that?
That's, yeah, that was the bagger and the front, uh, flat free front tires.
Got a motion on the table?
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table? Is there any more discussion for Jason about the mowers?
What do you wanna do with the old mower? That's for a purple wave. That's fun, I mean, yeah.
Should they take trade in?
Or we could...
I think you'd probably get more money if you went out with this John Deere mower on purple wave, you'd probably get a little better amount. What do you wanna list in that?
We got a motion on the table.
Second?
We got a second?
Well, we need to do the first motion.
Yeah.
We got a motion and a second already.
We're talking about a mower that we're gonna purchase.
Yep, we've got the motion and the second on there.
You got a motion and a second? All in favor? All opposed? Pass is five and O.
Motion, we sell that Deere mower on purple wave.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table to sell the John Deere mower on purple wave? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Gonna sell a new mower on purple wave, five and O.
Well, last but not least, uh, we have a Bandeys class coming up for the foggers, mosquito foggers, and a gentleman needs to, uh, he's gonna come here in a couple, three weeks to help us get these going. And then we're gonna take them out and get them calibrated. But he need, we, we are out of material. We need a fifty-five gallon drum of that, uh, bio mist. And it's running about forty-seven hundred for a fifty-five gallon drum of it.
Is that how much it was last year?
It was, uh, just, it went up just a little bit, it was like fifty, or forty...
Forty-two, wasn't it? Forty-two or forty-three last year?
No, it was forty-five, I think.
I think it was.
How much did we go through last?
We went through two.
We went through two of them?
Mm-hmm.
We're sitting out in our backyard.
Was, I, I, it has a shelf life of two years, so I didn't know if you wanted me to get two of them right off the bat or what.
That's, that was my only thing, do we wanna buy two fifty-five gallon drums of it and just, that's what they used last year? Or do we wanna take the chance of... Two in one year?
Thirty-nine sixty last year?
About thirty-nine sixty.
Oh, my!
Seven hundred dollars.
Oh, wow!
Guys, that's a little bit, I rounded it up a little bit, just to stay clear, but it won't be no forty-seven hundred dollars, I'll tell you that, but I just wanna... Eighty-five, eighty-five dollars a gallon.
Is how much it is?
Mm-hmm. So I just rounded it up.
Forty-six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Makes you look better when you come under. Yeah.
At that point, plus twenty-five dollars. If we're gonna use it, might as well get two drums.
Yeah.
Just your luck, you won't be able to get a second one when you need it.
Yeah.
See if they've got a discount, and I'll buy two at one time. I'd make a motion to buy two, two drums, and how much was it, Jason?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven hundred dollars a drum?
A piece.
A piece.
Got a motion and a second on the table to buy two fifty-five gallon drums and mosquito spurs. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Pass is five and O.
That's it, finally done.
Anything else for Jason, while we got him out of the gun?
Oh, those, yes, thank you, I forgot to put that on there. Real quick on those, was for, I went to class and they didn't know if you had a policy made up for flushing. And so he gave us a couple of those for valve flushing and then that, and then I just wanted to know if you wanted to, if we had one in, if not, if you guys wanted to copy that, or take that, turn it into a policy, and then just, uh, so we'd have a regular maintenance, everybody would know. That will send out, I'll send those out when we get ready to, uh, do it, and that way everybody has a copy of it. And, uh, so that way when the water turns red and everything, they'll know we're getting, they'll have that letter and say, hey, they're getting ready to do a bid, or better be prepared for it.
I mean, like the policies and procedures outside of code, it's either in those files somewhere or non-existent.
He just sat there and told me to, uh, just take it to your council, see if they have a policy with it, so I did.
Do we need to do anything special on, like, motion?
Just make sure the staff sends it out. Jason, do you want to tweak this a little if you want?
I'm good with it.
Anything else for Jason? Moving on. Police chief, Tori. Excuse me?
I don't have anything.
She don't have anything? Fire chief, Michael.
I don't have anything.
City administration, Jamie.
Um, I'd like to talk about the skating rink and what you guys want to do, um, when we hire someone. I know we've talked about, like, paying them hourly, or we could come up with like a salary, that like we do the swimming pool. Or they can, right now it's eighty, twenty, they get to, they get to keep twenty, they get to keep eighty percent of the skating rink totals, and then we get the twenty percent. And then they keep anything off of like the concessions that they bring in. I just didn't know if maybe offering some money would get people intere-, I mean, it's every Friday and Saturday for several months, so there's not a ton of people jumping up and down to...
Do we have anybody?
I have someone that might be interested, but they're not positive on how.
How is, uh, how's the swimming pool set up?
Well, we pay...
The manager has a set salary. And then the lifeguards get paid hourly.
What's the timeframe? Just skating, like, you know, fall, like, fall through the winter?
Yeah.
Like, uh, November to April or something?
Yeah, they usually just shut it down for the...
It's two nights, so it's Fridays.
Yeah, I think sometimes they did, was it Tuesday night skating or?
Thought they used to do Tuesday after school.
One day during the week.
Yeah.
Really, the last couple of years, I left it up to, I, I said, you open as much as you want, like, if you're open more, that's awesome.
Right.
You know, so, I kind of left it up to the manager what they can do and...
You have birthday parties too.
Right.
Yeah, and we've just been opening it for birthday parties since COVID, and it, I mean, we're booked almost every weekend.
How did that work?
Sometimes Saturday and Sunday.
In the past, when somebody booked it through a manager, did the manager get that money, or did, was it split?
That was part of the eighty, twenty, it was everything. Anything that the skating rink brought in, they got eighty, and the city got twenty. And then the concessions, like if they bought stuff to sell, was all on them.
So if we went to just play, paying somebody a flat hourly rate, I would say if you take someone hourly, what would be better, the salary and more stuff will be open.
Right.
That's what I was...
I think it'd be more enticing for somebody to, uh, take it as an hourly rate.
And here, uh, and I don't, I mean, my only question would be, I mean, do you do like fifteen dollars an hour and...
Maybe it works for his time.
But if they open it for fifteen hours a week, I mean, but I, if it gives a kid something to do, I guess it's worth it.
Right. And what about, uh, any type of snacks or concession, would they, would they do the same thing on them?
Yeah, if they could just buy their own stuff and sell it, and they keep the money.
They could, yeah, that'd be fine, I'm, I'm okay with that.
But then all, everything else would just, you know, skate rental and that stuff would just come all of a hundred percent to the city. Party rentals.
That would be fine.
But, I, you know, even if they just do the bare minimum seven to nine like they used to on Friday and Saturday nights, I mean, I think that's only thirty bucks.
Yeah.
Or they could pay.
I don't care if they open from seven to nine for younger kids, there was one time they done from nine to eleven for older kids.
And I think that was a pretty good...
I mean, I don't really care, I... But I think you need at least fifteen dollars an hour to make it worth somebody's time. I assume the only person who can run the skating rink, like, there's many staff, two people.
I mean, like I said, it's every Friday and Saturday, so sometimes that deflects people from wanting to do that, but in my opinion, I don't feel like we should have to.
Okay.
Cause that'll just get...
I, I would say we would hire one person, if they want someone to come help them, that's all we could figure out on them.
And there is a skate rental, is that correct? Does that go to?
That go, that'll all come to the city.
That can expect to do?
Like a dollar fifty if you have your own skates, and two dollars if you don't.
Okay, so, I just needed that, and I will get that posted, and we can figure it out.
So what about parties, like?
They'll go through the manager?
Okay.
Yep.
This person employee?
Seasonal. Just like our lifeguards.
Is your, is your, the manager, she's contractual?
Yeah. Is that an issue?
I don't know, I have to think about that.
What would be different than hiring, uh, one of the lifeguards, I mean, hire them as employees?
They're hired as employees.
Part-time employees, yeah. That basically...
Yeah, how's that insurance?
How's the whip center insurance?
Well, skating rink.
Um, like everything else, like the pool or anything? I'll double check on it and get people policy next time.
Like if somebody gets hurt?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, ready to go.
Yeah, liability on all of my belongings.
Skate's not working right, something breaks an ankle.
We need someone to come and look at them. Cause I don't think I do that. Good, we can have a skating party.
Sure.
But...
We need, we need you and your guys to go check all the skates before we...
I can do it, I, I ran it for twelve years, I can do it. I know it was a roller skate as good as anybody, I guarantee ya.
Make a motion on that.
I don't wanna run it now, thank you.
Just direct her to, figure something out.
It's, uh, consider the council, Jamie, see what you can put together.
Okay.
City, anybody got anything else for Jamie, you got anything else?
Did we find out anything on cleaning? I know we talked about the cleaning.
Yeah, I, I have a couple people interested, um, I was going to ask you guys if you wanted like to look at the contract and see what we're paying for, or if you would like them to submit something.
What it did?
Kind of, yeah, it is.
I mean, I think you'd have to, is there anything you want that's beyond typical?
Beyond...
I mean, my, my wife and I think differently when...
Yeah. Male, female differences, yes, I can see that.
We have a contract now, correct?
Yes. I mean, I would beef, well, I don't even know, like, it, I guess it depends on how you take it, like, John said, everybody's views on cleaning are different, so...
So you just put it out there that we're looking for someone to clean, and they come in, and this is what we're gonna do for this amount, and so I'll do something else for a different amount?
Or we could just say, you're gonna do X, Y, and Z, and this is how much we pay, if you're still interested, we'll put your name in. Can we do it that way?
Do it what way now?
Like, this is our contract, this is how much you'll make, if you're still interested, come forward.
Yeah, so if we have four people that all come in at the same price, and we just, just, we just get randomly pick who we want?
Sure. We can have them submit references.
I mean, you have a pretty good idea, can you profile a list of what we want, and we can look at it next council meeting?
Yeah.
I don't wanna say we put it out for bid though. Instead of a, if we're gonna decide what we want done, then we put it out there and let them bid it, then we choose from the bids that come in.
I mean, this year's just talking about office bidding, right?
Yeah, and we can just...
Something standard as to what that is.
And the skating rink too, the whip center.
Senior center.
Senior center.
Anything else, Jamie? We're still talking about, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I'd just get together something for us for next meeting.
Anything else, Jamie?
Nope.
Any questions for Jamie? John, Peter Turner.
I, I don't have anything.
How many mistakes did we make tonight?
None, we're doing...
We're doing good. Okay, moving on to old business, anybody wanna talk about property code violations on six forty-seven East Fifth?
I don't wanna talk about any of them.
Six fifty-one, eight oh eight, okay, we done covered the truck parking. I think Jeff said something about the power plant, any questions on them too? Bring us the bulk water project, anybody wanna know anything about that?
Not much of that, I'm saying we're still waiting.
Yep. New business, we covered the mowers, you wanna talk about swimming pool?
Uh, we need to just let you guys know that Jason and I have both been calling, um, several companies, and we are not getting very far. Uh, like I said in the report, um, we did find the blueprints. Um, we're worried that the next step might be jackhammering the bottom of the pool to find out what's going on.
The big pool or little?
The little. Intermediate pool. For now.
That, that was where the water was running out at the end of last year.
Yeah.
Yes.
I got, I got a list, I sent Jason the email. Um, I sent it out on the listserv and... I got, I got a list, I sent Jason the email. Um, I sent it out on the list serve and got quite a good response back and I attempted to call and did not get a good response after that, so.
The ones that were good and that were halfway decently priced, they were so busy and with no help, they are just staying right in their area. And they're not moving out any, anywhere. And that was more than three.
Yeah. And a lot of communities are building brand new pools and not repairing these pools, so. Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're not building.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not booking.
I just wanted, like, we just wanted to get it on everyone's radar because, I mean.
Yeah, and the ones we are going to maybe get out here, cha-ching. That's all I have to say about that.
Well, if they know what they're doing, I don't. I don't mind paying for. That's what you pay for, you get what you pay for sometimes too.
So I'm going to venture on with that, those, those other two.
Go ahead.
So I don't know if you guys saw Facebook, but our carnival for Jubilee backed out this year.
Oh no.
So.
What was the reason?
They had another carnival back out of a different venue that they're going to be able to make more money at. So. Our thinking caps are on and we're gonna try to find a carnival. If not, we will, um, have some different things and make it just as fun.
How many years?
Over 20. Over 20 that they've been coming.
Wow.
Yeah.
So. We have a few ideas. We just have to see how we can make them work, which I need to talk to you.
No, that lines up.
No, this is the carnival business. No ways.
Don't be like you already are. With that being said, anything else that you want to talk about while we're in the meeting? If not, I'd entertain somebody to make an amendment to do something else.
I'd make a motion that we overdone. I'd make a motion with adjournment.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Meeting over.